Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to MR1 MRSA subsection 403-A. Members of the public can meet by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 874-578-47812 and password 696921 or via computer at the information available online. Members of the public may also submit comments via email to info@sanfordmain.org. Thank you for that. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and living in a just, honest, moral world.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call. Council Hanselman. Council Stackpole.
President.
Council Tuttle.
President.
Council Lanigan.
President.
Council Hurley. Council, you with us?
Sorry.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
President.
Hi, my name is Tom Cody. Welcome. I'm the mayor of Sanford. Joining me tonight is City Manager Steve Buck and his Executive Assistant, Ms. Larissa Ricketts. Minutes 19-961.01. Order to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held on June 16th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Great. We'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
I've seen.
Oh, that's right, you were out. Council Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes carries six to zero. Mayor's report this evening, not much, other than just feeling various questions. I have a few questions and concerns I've fielded about various potholes around the community. One adjacent to McDonald's in South Sanford, around the traffic circle. I know, I don't know if Matt Hill is on the call tonight, but it sounds like there's some road repair work that I think is taking a somewhat of a backseat due to all the construction, which I understand totally. But I think some of the individuals out there are getting a little bit frustrated. So maybe I'll bring that up under future agenda items, Steve.
Okay.
And I saw that Chief Connolly is with us, I believe, to present one of these topics tonight. I do want to reach out and thank the chief for his video that's gone out on Facebook, at least, in regards to racial inequality in the Black Lives Matter movement. I thought it was a really, really great video, chief, and thank you for pulling that together. And I'm glad we got that out the door, so.
I agree, Mr. Mayor.
So Subcommittee reports, I don't know if we, did we meet last week, two weeks ago? It's kind of a blurry, blurry three.
Well, you only had one meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any report from that meeting? And I think.
The property.
It was property, yeah. So I couldn't make it that morning. I believe some topics are on the agenda, so maybe we could just save it.
Yeah, it wasn't, it's nothing that wouldn't, I wouldn't say extraordinary that wouldn't be on the agenda.
Okay. Perfect. All right. We'll turn it over to the City Manager.
And I have no report for you this evening. Today's events precluded the writing of that report, so.
We're off to a flying start. Okay. So Communications Presentations, none. With participation, anyone on the phone here or through Zoom like to speak publicly? You can either raise your hand in the automated system or just give me a shout right now. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. The city council will take public comment on the following. 19-941.01, a public hearing to receive comments on the renewal of a liquor license with malt, spiritus, vinous privileges from Pioneer Gaming LLC doing business as Sanford OT 890 Main Street or 200C Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 19-943.01, a public hearing to receive comments on renewal of liquor license with malt and vinous privileges from All American Pizza LLC doing business as All American Wood Fired Pizza, 489 Main Street, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. 19-951.01, a public hearing to receive comments on the renewal of the city's special amusement permit and application for a liquor license renewal with malt, spiritus, and vinous privileges from Milltown Tavern, 898 Main Street, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak against? See, none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 19-953.01, a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed amendments to City Code Chapter 74, Alcohol and Entertainment, Chapter 120, Fees, and Chapter 149 Licensing, so as to make business licensing more business friendly regarding cost and approval time by moving certain license types from Category 2 to Category 1. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak in favor in this or present this item tonight? See, Mayor Buck?
Yes, I'm going to present in lieu of City Clerk Cody, who's busy working on election materials tonight. This is a very abnormal year, and so I wanted to give her the time to be doing so. Under this, this has been before the, I don't remember if this was before the property or the zoning. I think it's before property because it was in the licensing aspect.
It was property, Steve.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't remember coming to zoning.
It was property.
So it was property. So, so not different than the two renewal liquor licenses that were before you tonight. You know, currently those are Category 2. They have to go through a public hearing process. We have to post that in the paper. It's becoming more and more difficult all of the time to get postings in the paper and such under that. So hold that thought in your process. This also looks at, is it truly necessary for the city council to hold a public hearing and be the approving authority under a Category 2 license for a renewal for a business that's operating that's met all of the criteria, that is receiving the annual or biannual inspections and passing that without any adversity and such under that? So the proposals that you have amongst these licensing is that that would move to a Category 1. The renewals would move to Category 1 and be approved administratively and no longer come to the city council. It would save the public hearing fees as well. The state law does not require a public hearing for renewals. For anybody in a new, so if a new business opened and needed a liquor license and such under that, that would remain a Category 2. We'd do the posting so the public would be made aware. We'd hold a public hearing and the city council would approve those. After that point, it would move to a Category 1 under the amendments that we have here this evening. And then the other aspect that's in here for both business licensing as well as the rental licensing is for the first time it'll allow for prorating. So if you license your business, let's say mid-year, say your liquor license is due on a calendar basis and you license today in July, we'd prorate that. You'd only pay six twelfths of that. We do, currently the ordinances do not account for that. We'd like to have that for all of those licensing, the Category 1 licensing. We'd also like to have that amendment as is in here for the rental license as well. If somebody comes on board mid-season, they'd only pay a partial year fee for that. And then when their next license came up, they'd pay the full twelve fee. All of that is encumbered in here. It was done administratively to account for a more business-friendly environment, make it more streamlined and to allow, to lessen the need for the advertisement of public hearings that have become extremely expensive since we only have the Portland Press Herald left as far as the ability to post those hearings. And we're not finding the public reasonably sees those in the small print on the advertisement page. So that's, that's the summary.
So Steve, if we had or there was a community issue with one of these establishments, how would, how would that be handled if they were moved from two to one and didn't come to the council for approval?
So under the, under the amendments, the Category 1 renewals or licensing can always be moved back to Category 2. So if there's a problem with the inspection or when you look at the liquor licensing aspects, if they've been leaving garbage outside, if they've had a number of inadvertent number of police department calls that would get pulled, if they, say the egress or the sprinkler system, whatever the fire marshal was finding was not corrected, then it would be moved to the city council and the city council would be the legislative, as a legislative body, they would be the one making the denial. So if there's no reason for denial, we would just keep it at a Category 1 for renewal only. So that would start administratively as far as those determinations. If any of those are picked up, then we would keep it under a Category 2 and put that to the city council.
And if a council member on their own became aware of an issue that maybe wasn't generally known, and I'm not talking about doing anything secretively here or anything like that, who would, they would bring that to you and say, hey, look, I've heard there's been after hours or I've driven by there and I've seen lights on after hours, people drinking when they should be closed or something like that? How would a complaint from a counselor be handled?
I would recommend that you make that complaint directly to my office and then I would disseminate that down to, depending on the nature of the complaint, either to the police chief or code enforcement and make the city clerk aware of ongoing issues and to keep that under Category 2.
Okay. And I guess I should clarify a little bit more. It would be likely that somebody, I'll use myself as an example. Somebody would call me and say they saw something going on and then I would speak to you. So I just wanted to make that a little clearer. I'm not going to go out investigating these places on my own, so.
You're not driving by these places at 1:30 in the morning, Bob?
No, no, see if the lights are still on. No, I won't be.
Two would be okay, Bob, right?
Maybe early in the morning, right?
Yeah. All right, sounds like a good idea to me.
We're going to talk, we're going to tell them, we're going to talk about this item next. So unless this is a clarifying question.
Yeah, no, no, it's a clarity thing, Tom. What, was this the issue that we made an adjustment on at property that I'm forgetting? Because we already did the adjustment.
The adjustment at property was, it was made known and it's in this filing here this evening was to bring in the prorated piece under Ian Housefield's, under the rental registration. That's what was not in the original. So that's been put in here and I can show that under the business item.
Okay. I thought it was something else, but that's okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, sounds good to me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak in favor of this public hearing? Anyone here to speak against? Okay. Seeing, we've got a public hearing closed. Consent agenda, any concerns relating to the consent agenda? Speak up. You have a concern.
No concern, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing none, we'll declare the consent agenda approved. Old business none, new business 19-954.01. Order to approve proposed amendments to City Code Chapter 74, Alcohol and Entertainment, Chapter 120, Fees, and Chapter 149 Licensing in order to make the licensing process more business friendly by reducing costs and approval wait, approval wait time, excuse me, by moving certain licenses from type, from, excuse me, from types from Category 2, city council approval to Category 1 administrative approval. This item must be read on two meetings. This is the first reading. Anything further on this item?
No.
No.
Okay. So we'll see this again at the second meeting in July and I promise to read it more clearly the next time. Okay. 19-971.01, order to accept a bid from Yankee Ford Sales for 2021 Ford Interceptor Utility Vehicles in the amount of eighty, excuse me, forty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-six. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay. Chief, do you want to give us a briefing on this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Perfect.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, chief.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you. Yes, so we sent out a total of nine bids on the mailing list. It was also posted on the MMA website and the city of Sanford website for two 2021 Ford Interceptors. We received three bids by mail before the deadline. The highest bid was Casco Bay, fifty-five thousand two forty-eight for two. From Key Ford was number two. They came in at fifty-two, two ninety-eight. And Yankee Ford came in at forty-eight, nine forty-six. And the difference in the prices was all regarding the trade-in values. Yankee Ford is going to give us a more money for the two cars that we're going to trade in. So they came out lowest. They're the company that won the last bid and we've had good luck with them, no issues at all. We bought two cars and we're going to, as, when these cars are delivered or before, probably a little bit before, we're going to order the second two. And we did that on purpose because we want them staggered by about six months. So we won't have four cars with all the same mileage going at the same time. And there should be no problem. We'll just get the, the other two cars probably in December. And four months, four to five months after we order them. So we're going to probably order them in November, I guess, right around there. And we should get them four to five months after that. So the bid is, the bid winner was Yankee Ford for forty-eight thousand nine forty-six.
Excellent. This obviously falls within the city's current budgeted CIP level.
Yes, it does. As a matter of fact, we were granted four vehicles. We bought two and we're going to purchase the other two a couple of months from now.
You got it. Okay. Questions on this?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Yeah, if I could, if I could just add, so this, this is the start of the revised program whereby, typically we would have held back one or two of these, these units. So they're coming out of the fleet at an appropriate time before the largest of maintenance expended expenses are incurred. Typically, we would have held those in for the CID and/or other administrative vehicles and then ultimately ended up incurring those same expenses. And at the end of that lifecycle, then sell those out and get little to nothing out of that. So we get much more than $5,000 more out of these vehicles. And we're not going to incur the heavy maintenance costs. So that's the program that the city council had previously approved as part of the CIP by leasing five vehicles within CID and administration so that we can move these out in a timely manner, get a better trade-in value. That predication is holding true on this first and initial bid under the new program.
Excellent. Any other questions? So, okay. So we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Yes.
Council Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Welcome. 19-957.01, resolved to appoint City Manager Steve Buck as Sanford's representative on the Maine Municipal Association, MMA Legislative Policy Committee, LPC, for July 2020 to June 2022 with a member of the city council designated as alternative and to support Springvale resident Gary Lamb to represent Senate District 33 on the LPC. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay.
Do the alternate.
I believe the current alternate is Deputy Mayor Hanslip. Do I have that correct?
Yes. Yes.
Still good, Joe?
Yes.
Is anybody else willing to volunteer for that? Otherwise, I'm happy to have the deputy mayor continue with his fine duties as the alternate.
Joe's the man.
He's the man.
Congratulations, counselor.
Thank you. Or condolences, Mr. Mayor.
Steve's doing his job. He never has to go.
Yeah.
So if I could, if I could comment on this, so the long session is coming up. So typically the LPC will review approximately 2,800 bills because all legislators love giving us new bills. So the LPC focuses, the Maine Municipal Association focuses on those bills, only those bills that have municipal impact, which the large lion's share of those are. I've been serving on the LPC since approximately 2000. So been there for a while, truly enjoy serving on that. So in our district, District 23, because of the percentage of population that Sanford-Springvale is of that district, you, the city council, get to appoint, as you're proposing here this evening, you get to appoint one member from our community, either elected or appointed individual to the LPC. The second seat, so there's two seats for each senate district. The second seat is run by elec, by election. The only person that I've seen, and I really want to speak up strongly in support of Gary Lamb's running for this particular office. Gary is the manager in Waterboro. He lives in Springvale. I've served with Gary the last couple of years. He ran for the office and was elected the last time. He's still running again. I found that Gary's service on there was very reflective of the region. He brings an excellent perspective to the LPC. He's very vocal. He asks questions and we would ride to the LPC together from time to time and had some great manager networking time as part of that process as well. So I certainly want to speak out in support of Mr. Lamb's running for this particular office and ask the city council to show support.
Excellent. Thank you, Gary Lamb, for all you're doing for the community. We appreciate it. Anything further on this one?
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. We'll do roll call vote. Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Council Tuttle.
Yes.
Council Lanigan.
Yes.
Council Hurley.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hanslip.
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. 19-960.01, order to authorize the city manager to accept funding in the amount of 335,500 dollars from the Maine Department of Health and Human Services under the Keep Maine Healthy 2020 Municipal COVID-19 Awareness Campaign Program. Do I have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm waiting. I don't hear one. I'm going to speak up.
Nice. Okay. See, Mayor Buck?
Okay. So I have Ian Housefield, who's on, is online here tonight, as well as Jennifer Quimby from York County Community Action Program Corporation. I'm going to ask them to speak about the grant and as far as the details. The only thing I'll give is a quick synopsis is, I believe Sanford is the unique in the fact that we made a regional application using the auspices and to-be contracted services of York County Community Action Corporation in the amount of, as disclosed here, uncovering, I think, seven municipalities, or at least seven zip codes in here. So we have one of the larger grant awards and I'll let Ian and Jennifer present the details on this. Thank you.
Excellent. Director Housefield, Ms. Quimby, welcome.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to defer to Jennifer here. We talked about this earlier today and she'll talk a little bit about the program and the project through the screen.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, great. Yes, I've worked for York County Community Action for 25 years and 18 of those years I've lived here in Sanford currently in Springvale. So I'm really happy to be the administrator of this grant. I'm currently the WIC Program Director at York County Community Action. So I'll be devoting part of my time to advertising, hiring, training, and working with five health educators that will be hired for different sectors. And those will include congregate living sites, businesses, school and childcare centers, libraries, polling, and outlying towns. So there are three main areas that we're going to be working in. And the first is to provide public education about COVID-19 awareness. And that can be door-to-door or at group activities. We'll be handing out information, taking phone calls, just supporting the public with the awareness. And we'll also be working at group events and meetings to provide physical distancing and public health support to make sure that everybody stays safe. Also, local business assistance. And we do have quite a bit of, in our budget line for materials and supplies to actually help local businesses make sure that their stores or facilities can be COVID-19 compliant. And we'll be working very closely with our CDC liaison, Adam Hartley. And he is willing to meet with us weekly and assist us in training so that we're all up to date on the most current COVID-19 awareness policies and practices for the state of Maine. Are there any questions?
No.
Great.
So, so you mentioned the five health officers. That, that's part of the larger number, obviously. And then it looks like there's a laundry list here of other items. Ian or Jennifer, I don't know if you just want to bring us through the total to make sure that folks at home know where this money's going.
Sure, sure. The, the staffing will be myself at 16 hours a week for six months. And then the five health educators will all be working 40 hours a week for six months. And so the total with salary and fringe is 149,800 dollars. And then the bulk of the balance is in supplies and materials. It's 86,500 dollars in supplies, public, physical distancing supplies. You know, the plastic shields. The libraries will be receiving 20,000 dollars worth of physical distancing supplies. That includes Sanford and Springvale library, surrounding libraries, and 30,000 for hand sanitizers, masks, cleaning supplies. So we're going to have a lot of resources to be able to distribute, which will hopefully get us in the door and spread the awareness.
Excellent.
In addition, there's some time dedicated to polling safety for, for the elections coming up. There's funding for that. And then as well, we've programmed in here 12 public service announcements through the PEG channels. So things like how to ride the bus, how to, how to do, maybe how to dawn and doft a mask or maybe how frequently you, you clean such, something like that. Also other things, just following up on a number of the public service announcements that have been done so far through the city under the existing contract that have been advertised in that way. So additional funds for that. So in addition to the labor administered through York County Community Action Corporation and their activities, there are those two additional items that the city will be managing.
Right. And I understand there's also some improvements, I believe, to the conferencing space at the, at the hall into the chamber?
Yes, and that, that's under a different grant, Mayor. Yep. And that was a JAG grant, Justice Department grant. Part of that went to support police department equipment, PBE, personal protective equipment, and then approximately 20,000 dollars to improve access to city council meetings. So planning on blended, blended city council, public access meetings in the future. So that will upgrade, upgrade the equipment, upgrade the video capacities and allow streaming capacity in for city council meetings and then allow public meetings that are blended. So the ability to participate publicly remotely as well as in person.
Okay. Sorry about that. I guess I got my grants mixed up here, so many.
No, it's perfectly fine. There's a lot of.
Different things going on.
A lot of things going on.
Yeah. Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that. Any questions in the council?
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
All set.
Okay, perfect, everybody. So we will do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yep.
Every mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Thank you, Jennifer and Ian, for your time tonight and, um, appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, nineteen dash nine six three dot zero one, order to ratify a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Sanford Police Association, Maine Association of Police, created of July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Do you have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. Bob Beaty.
On this particular item, I'm gonna revert right to the red line. Uh, the city council has seen this a couple of times. They've had executive session to work through contract negotiation materials, uh, and has moved the, the attached red line forward. Uh, there was a last minute change made to the red line today based around, um, it produces no fiscal change or impact. Uh, all of the negotiated terms are the same, but we previously, in the prior red line that was pushed out there, we had established a twenty-year wage table, trying to take the complicated language that's in the, the, the contract and propagate that on a twenty year late, uh, wage table. Two things occurred in that. Uh, A, there was, there was, uh, several errors in there because we, we had, uh, put forward a table that was used for the market comparison and had the longevity years in the wrong spot. We, uh, I was working on correcting that today and then by mutual agreement, we decided to just halt, put it back to the format that it's always been at, uh, and propagate it that way. But that starts on page twelve as being the only difference here. I'm gonna scroll down to that. It's articles nine and ten. Article nine wages, this is the old format that was in there, so it gave the base wages for each of these, uh, various steps as far as the, um, both the patrol corporals and sergeants are concerned. Uh, and then we gave the cola and or, and or a, any other adjustments that might be there thereafter. But brought it back to these, these are the numbers that the council has agreed to. This contains, um, a small amount of market adjustments as disclosed here on the next page, uh, with a two percent cola. Uh, so you have the start of year one for a patrol officer going down through years four. Uh, and the titles of corporal and sergeant have now been exchanged for sergeant and lieutenants. Uh, A, we find that the job duties entailed by our corporals and sergeants are similar to those of sergeants and lieutenants. We have another piece of language in here as far as future market analysis, how we perform that. Uh, so the wage scales is reflective here for the first year of this contract, uh, for twenty twenty-one, uh, contains a dollar seventy-seven per hour, uh, adjustment to the patrol position only for, uh, time zero through year one. A twenty-seven cent per hour, uh, start of year one, year one through year two. And on the sergeant's, uh, position, which is now becomes the lieutenant's, an increase of sixty cents per hour on that base. Aside from that, all the other wages stayed the same. Two percent cola was applied to on, on top of that. And the, for the next two fiscal years, there's a two and a quarter percent cola for year two of the contract and a two point two five percent cola for year three of the contract. This, the last piece of language that's in here is all future market adjustments shall use a comparison based on first and second line supervisors identified in patrol. So when we've been doing the market analysis over the years, we've standardized the format and the contracts that we pull on those and plug in, uh, for all of these various positions, ranks, and the continuum of years of service, we plug that in. The agreean- the agreeance of, of allowing the chi- name change from sergeant to the, uh, corporal to sergeant and sergeant to lieutenant's was that we would continue to use the same market analyses moving forward, which is reliant upon the first and second line supervisors, because each department call, call, can call them differently. So when we compare the job descriptions, um, the, the titles don't always align, but the job duties do. So that's why the first and second line supervisors. All other aspects in the contract stay as the council previously has seen, uh, the fiscal impact of which is, is within seventy-four hundred dollars, uh, from the originally anticipated of, uh, budget amount that was, uh, put into the contracts back last December, uh, put into the city's budget process back last December. So it was a, an exceptionally good process in negotiating with the police department this year. Uh, we've, this is our second contract now. We did a one year and now a three year under the, um, revised, uh, negotiation process, uh, interest-based bargaining and eliminated the, uh, utilization of the old ad- adversarial bargaining positions and come out with a long-range planning product as well as a collective bargaining agreement. And I'll hold it at that point.
Excellent. So, yeah, we, we saw some executive session. Any, any further feedback or questions about this from the council?
Well, I, I re- I remembered my question from executive session. Uh, it would be, uh, uh, so is the, the bottom line, this proposal is within what was budgeted for, for this year?
Uh, seventy-five hundred dollars above what was budgeted for this year. But I know that I can easily cover that because it's two positions that are currently being advertised right now that we, we obviously will not have on board for July first.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions to council?
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing now, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Thank you. And like lastly tonight, nineteen dash nine seven two dot zero one, order to declare a state of emergency and set forth an extended emergency ordinance amending chapter twenty disturbance of warrants during the COVID to coronavirus pandemic twenty twenty, thereby amending chapter twenty to delegate the city manager to sign warrants on behalf of the city council. Do you have a motion?
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
City Manager Buck?
The prior emergency ordinance that was passed allowed, um, for me to sign, review the warrants, sign on behalf of the city council as a delegate. Uh, it assigns, um, Paula Simpson as treasurer as the co-review reviewer and, and countersignature on that. And it puts the school superintendent as a reviewer and signer as a delegate to the, uh, Board of Education. So we can sign the warrants during this time period, but we're still under the active, uh, state of emergency. We're still under the, uh, COVID-19, uh, changes. We're still operating under the FOIA, the amended FOIA that allows for the electronic, uh, meetings as we're conducting here this evening. So in order to get warrants timely reviewed, find, uh, the extension, this would be the, uh, the extension thereof extending us out through, um, beyond the August tenth date that currently is out there. The prior emergency ordinance had, had lapsed on June twenty-ninth, uh, so this would pick up where that, that ordinance left off. The exact same ordinance as was done before, it simply extends it out, uh, through August.
Okay, any questions to council on this?
I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole?
Yes.
Council Tuttle?
Yes.
Council Lanigan?
Yes.
Council Hurley?
Yes.
Every mayor Hanslip?
Yes.
I'm also a yes carries seven to zero. Okay, that concludes the normal part of the agenda. Council member comments. Council Hanselman?
Yes, thank you. Um, a quick one, uh, reminder to get out and vote next Tuesday, July fourteenth. If you were somebody that requested an absentee ballot, keep in mind that if you're here in Sanford, the city is recommending you get it in the mail no later than July tenth and, um, if you're out of town, you might have missed your chance because they wanted you to have it in the mail by July fifth. Um, so that's it for me.
Okay. Council Stackpole?
Uh, yeah, I, I, uh, want to, uh, just clarify, uh, those of you that know me know I, I spend a significant amount of time out in, uh, interland here during the months of, uh, July and August. I'm out in West Newfield, uh, at my camp. Uh, if you want to contact me, because I have no cell service, uh, out here, uh, you can call me, uh, on, uh, my Sanford number, the three-two-four-nine-two-five-eight number. Uh, that's the number that's on the website. Uh, don't use my cell phone number. Uh, if you do, leave me a message on that. Could be days before I even get the message, so I'm driving around here at a cell tower. Uh, I do have internet, which is how I can get my, uh, Sanford phone calls. I do get emails. Uh, texts are a bit wonky, so, uh, hit or miss with that. Uh, and, uh, so please, if you feel the need to communicate with me, uh, use email. Again, that address is on the website, uh, and, uh, use my Sanford, uh, phone number to call me, uh, if you need to, to do that. So this is both for council members, city personnel, and the public in general.
Off the grid. All right.
Off the, off the grid, that's right.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Tuttle?
Yeah, briefly, Mr. Mayor, I would concur with Councilor, uh, Hanselman on the primary, uh, vote. I'm encouraging the people to vote by absentee, uh, and to be safe and strong, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Okay. Council Lanigan?
Yes, I just wanted to thank, uh, Officer Smalls from the, uh, Police Department for bringing me out and, uh, bringing me around to the homeless, uh, encampments that we have and kind of meeting the community that we have living, um, in Sanford and also kind of bringing us to, uh, some of the areas kind of devastated by the homelessness and, um, I, I'll have something on a future agenda item, but I just wanted to thank him and then also the good work that they're doing over there with the York County Shelter, um, on, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, uh, offering lunches for that neighborhood. It's, uh, well-received. Uh, the, um, Catholic Christian has donated their building as a space for them to host and it's, it's working out really well. So I just wanted to say thank you and congratulate them on a, a good program so far.
Excellent. Councilor Hurley?
I'm all set this evening.
Okay. Every mayor Hanslip?
I have nothing tonight.
Wow, this is the shortest meeting we've had in a long, long time. I don't remember a, a less than an hour meeting in, in probably a year or two. Um, so, good for us.
Hold your breath, Tom.
I did some math today. I, I was like, I, I'm the city manager. I'm, uh, I'm on the, I'm on the downhill run at this point as far as my mayorship here and I, I did some math and I've been the mayor now for two thousand, three hundred and eighty days. And, uh, it, it, it feels like five thousand sometimes, but it, it's, it's, it's been a lot of fun and I've learned a lot and, uh, it's been rewarding for sure, but I've got a, I've got about a hundred and thirty or so to go and, uh, it seems a little bit surreal. So, um, I certainly didn't want to end it this way, uh, where we're all distance, uh, talking and all that. So hopefully one of these days we can all be in the same room, feel safe doing that. Um, but, you know, it struck me, actually, the Council Stackpole was talking, giving out his, his phone number and contact details, um, on a live meeting, it just how different sort of the local, I'll call politicians for, for lack of better words, but, you know, we're, we're, we're out in front on a lot of these things and, and handling the day-to-day and, uh, it's important work and, uh, thank, thank you all for your, your energy to keep things going and make things positive and see positive change. So, uh, it's all good. Um, so with that, I, I believe, uh, we've got the seven o'clock showing of the ESPN, um, documentary on tonight about Sanford and the ballpark. And, uh, I met with the individual, uh, that, that created that program for a few hours and talked about a lot of what Sanford had going on from a broadband perspective, solar, the high school, and, and really tried to sell the community. I, I, I passed on the, the showing to be on the program, um, just for various reasons, but it wa- wasn't about me, so I, I didn't want it to be a distraction in any way. I wasn't there and it had really nothing to do with me. So I'm excited to sit back and watch and, uh, hopefully it, it chose Sanford in a positive light and, uh, believe it will. Um, so that's what I have for, um, my comment tonight. Future agenda items?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one, um, and it touches upon yours and it may not be an agenda item, but I'd just like to revisit at, uh, some point what our intention is to go back to in-person or hybrid meetings. I'm very intrigued about the hybrid, uh, you know, option as we move forward. And kind of in conjunction with that, I've been watching quite a few other, um, of our neighboring communities, you know, selectmen meetings and some of the city council meetings and other, um, communities. And I, I've noticed that most of their meetings do include a kind of a live video feed of their, uh, council members or selectmen and it is a little bit, you feel a little bit more connected to real people, um, seeing faces. And I, I'm not necessarily, uh, you know, love, uh, having my, my face show up when I'm speaking, but I, I do think that it creates a kind of a better connection and more of a sense of a, a conversation or in-person meeting. So just something to think about if we continue with the online format, um, and just throwing it out there, I guess, for, for future conversations.
Absolutely.
So, so you're saying I'm gonna have to comb my hair before meetings now?
Well, you can decide how you want to approach that, but.
At least wear a shirt, counselor.
Oh, well, okay, yeah. I'll throw that on over my bathing suit for a while.
There you go. Yeah, exactly. Um, so future agenda item from my end, I, I've got a few calls, as I said, um, City Manager Buck, about people calling into Public Works and basically being told that, you know, they're in construction mode and, you know, that some of the, the repair work is, is, is sort of taking a backseat, at least that, I've had two different people express very similar story. Um, so as far as, you know, hey, when are you gonna get to X, Y, and Z? And the, the response has been, well, we're busy building roads. And that's one hundred percent true. I just, however, it doesn't fix anybody's problem, right? If, if you have a giant pothole in front of your house, um, still needs to be sorted out. So i- if we can just circle back with that group and find out how we're doing as far as response times and different things on potholes, you know, maintenance work, um, just get a reality check from them, that'd be great.
Yes, yes, all right, well, so we're, we're still down six positions. We just extended two offers, uh, one for an EO one and one for a canic, uh, but we're, we're still down beyond that, uh, yeah, yeah, no, we're still down six positions beyond those two, so. And, and we're in the busiest construction season that we've ever had, so, uh, the crew that we have, it's not, they're doing a, they're doing an exceptional job for us, it's just there isn't enough of them.
Yep, totally agreed. And, and I don't think anybody's disputing that at all. Everything, everything is looking really, really positive, so, and, and I've gotten tons of comments about that as well. Um, but, yeah, it, 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 it feels good, the progress we're making, but again, this, some of the little things are still some, some concern out there.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah.
Uh, one of the things I, you know, I just thought of it actually, I was talking to a, a school board member today. Um, I just, I don't, I wonder if people know that, I mean, they still haven't really decided anything about school in the fall, but they have been meeting, I don't think if there is school at home, it's gonna be the same as what parents saw in the spring. Like, it, it encouraged people to pay attention, paying, uh, pay attention, stay engaged. I think those conversations are just about to boot up again. Uh, but they have been literally talking to homeschool organizations and, you know, trying to look for a better mix, I believe, uh, but they still are not sure what they're gonna do in the fall, so. In case parents are, as parents wait with bated breath, I'm not sure if there's any big, any ready answer yet.
Thank you for that. Um, any other future agenda items or final comments?
Uh, Mayor, if I could, if I could just comment on the, the elections?
Sure.
Uh, so I'm working with, uh, City Clerk Cody today. Um, I was asking her about absentee ballots, uh, so she can pick, she's, we continue to look at numbers and compare it to the, uh, primary election from two years ago. Uh, they had a little over fifteen hundred, uh, ballots cast at that particular primary election two years ago. We're nearly there on absentee ballots alone. So, yeah, so thi- this came about, you know, as, as we're planning, you know, we're looking at the equipment the state, the state has sent us, the, the requisite, you know, shields with the pass few, uh, pass through, the, the P P E safety equipment, um, the grant that the council accepted this evening is gonna provide us for additional staffing to, for, call them gatekeepers, the people counting in and out, uh, doing cleaning in between votes and stuff like that. So just bring it all up. I'm just wondering, are we gonna have an abnormally high voter turnout by the time we get the, the people that are voting in person? Or are we gonna see virtually nobody voting in person and, and virtually all of that is coming through at absentee ballots? So we, we don't know what that answer is yet, but we're setting up as though we're gonna have a normal number of, of people coming in for voting in person.
Will be interesting. I mean, times are changing and I think there's things that will come out of this coronavirus that really prompt permanent change. We'll see, but it certainly makes sense to take a different perspective on a lot of these old-fashioned sort of approaches to what we thought was very normal things. So we'll see what the in-person vote looks like, but it sounds like we're prepared either way.
We are, yes. Thank you.
Okay, uh, final words. If not, we will, uh, conclude the agenda and, and the meeting tonight. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you again in two weeks. All right, so thank you very much.